... meeting. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with the proclamation. I'm going to proclaim March 12 through 16 as Multiple Scoriosis Awareness Week. Is there someone here to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is MS Awareness Week all over the country. There's millions of people afflicted with MS and thousands here in Kansas, and we appreciate you acknowledging and recognizing the awareness for the week and appreciate your signing the proclamation.
Thank you. My pleasure. I'll read this and present it to you. Whereas an unpredictable, often debilitating, disease of the central nervous system, multiple sclerosis, MS, disrupts the flow of information between an individual's body and brain; and whereas MS affects an estimated 2.5 million worldwide, 400,000 in the U.S. and 4,000 in Kansas; and whereas often first diagnosed in individuals aged 20 to 50, MS is the most common neurological disease leading to disability in young adults; and whereas March 12 through 16, 2012, the National MS Society will sponsor MS Awareness Week for the City of Lawrence; and whereas the mission of the National Multiple Scoriosis Society is to mobilize people and resources to drive research for a cure and to address the challenges of everyone affected by MS, now therefore I, Aaron Cromwell, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim March 12 through 16, 2012, as Multiple Scoriosis Awareness Week in the City of Lawrence, and encourage everyone to recognize efforts to diagnose, treat, and manage this disorder, and commend this observance to all of our citizens. Thank you. March 17, 2012, is the 25th anniversary, the 25th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. Do we have a speaker?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Roger Browning, one of the co-chairs this year for the 25th Annual Lawrence-St. Patrick's Day Parade, along with Gene Shaughnessy. We've been around the parade for all 25 years and starting to get used to doing it, and we turned it into a charity function. And this year, we've had about 13 events to raise money for local charities to benefit young people in the Lawrence community. And I'd like to introduce Gene to speak about some of our dignitaries.
Good evening. With us this evening, we have two of the culprits that actually started this 25 years ago. Wesley Kabbler, better known as Uncle Wesley. Wesley, raise your hand so people can see you. He likes to hide. And also, our grand marshal this year, that used to be with ABC Sports and ABC News, and he was all over the world last 25 years, but he always managed to make it back for the parade. And he's called away from Marietta, Georgia, this year. Mike Ribbage, our grand marshal. And our St. Patrick's Day Queen for 2012, Cassie Weatherwax. We have a little present for everyone. If you could wait for the proclamation, we'll try to see if we can get you to wear these Saturday and any other day you feel Irish.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation here and present it to you. Whereas in 2012, the Lawrence-St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee is celebrating its 25th year as an organization in Lawrence; and whereas the Parade Committee encompasses four basic themes: to honor Irish Americans and their contributions to America; to celebrate the legend and spirit of St. Patrick through a fun, good old-fashioned parade; to promote an atmosphere of benevolence, friendship, and cooperation through the parade and other associated events; and to support and exemplify the idea that charity and goodwill begins at home, benefiting your friends, neighbors, and the Lawrence community; and whereas this year's parade will be dedicated to the founders of the Lawrence-St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee: Bill Sullivan, Mike Rebich, Wes Kabbler, Mike Jones, Mike Wilson, and Gene Shaughnessy; in memory of Don Fambro, and in honor of the military and Douglas County law enforcement and emergency services. And whereas the Lawrence-St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee is self-supporting and depends solely on the resources of interested businesses and citizens who donate their time, talents, and good humor to sponsor worthwhile charitable causes on a yearly basis, now therefore I, Aaron Cromwell, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Saturday, March 17, 2012, for the day of the City of Lawrence's 25th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, and thank the citizens of Lawrence for supporting the Lawrence-St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee's charity fundraisers during the months of February and March. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. See you Saturday.
Moving on now to our consent agenda. All matters listed on consent are considered under one motion and enacted by one motion. There is no separate discussion of those items. If discussion is desired, that item will need to be pulled from consent to be considered separately. Is there an item on consent that a member of the commission would like considered separately? Is there an item on consent that a member of the public would like removed for separate discussion? In hearing none, I would like to add to consent payroll totaling $1,816,676.21 and 255 claims to vendors totaling $4,057,707.52. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Amick, seconded by Commissioner Carter. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Moving on to City Manager's Report. Dave?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the commission, I'm just going to walk through this week's report. We did receive an award recognizing our website, and appreciate all of the work that goes into that from a number of different departments. Megan and Eric and others, I think, do a really good job of continuing to improve our website. We certainly want the community to know about its local government, and I think that this is a recognition that we've made some progress, and there's obviously opportunities to improve that. One of the things that we do put on our website is where we spend all of our money. We've got a list of all of our vendor payments in 2011. We also have everybody's wages on a separate document as well, under the Budget tab as well. So if you add payroll and you add the vendor payments, you've got basically where all of the city money went in 2011. You see some trends there as far as increases, almost, what have we got there? $600,000 more in retirement payments, increase in electricity, and a little bit in gas. The landfill charges went up. It's primarily because of the large rate increase, but we did have a reduction in how much we paid MB Transportation. That was primarily because of some fleet repairs. We were fortunate recipients of some stimulus funding, so we bought new buses, so we didn't have to repair some of the aging fleet. There's other things there as well. Obviously, if you have any questions about any of those payments, there's a story behind every dollar, so be happy to look into that. We do provide a narrative on the payments of $25,000 or more. Appreciate Cynthia's work on that, along with a lot of other people that put that together. Got an online budget calculator that we've improved, and I think it's maybe of interest as well, as far as doing some mill levy calculations. Information about the February building permits, reasonably good news in regards to the single-family market. That's certainly a good month. Month doesn't make a trend, but glad to see that. Information there on the item coming out of the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, in regards to a human services transportation plan. Appreciate the work on that. And finally, Jonathan has been helping along with our parking control office in regards to moving forward on your direction in regards to the donation meter plan, and you see the implementation plan that we are proceeding with getting out on the street here in the coming weeks. So be happy to respond to any questions that you all might have on any of these items.
Thank you, Dave. Questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We'll move on to the regular agenda. First up is a rezoning request.
Mayor, as Sandy moves to the podium, I would remind you of your practice to disclose any ex parte communications on quasi-judicial matters, such as the rezoning before you tonight.
Sure. Thank you. I can start that off, and I have received no ex parte communications on this, actually whatsoever, I don't think. Certainly nothing that was substantial.
Nor have I.
I have not either.
We're clear.
Good evening. You have two items that are related to the same property, the rezoning and the preliminary plat. Planning Commission heard those items in their February agenda. We have, the property is located in the Fairfield Farms subdivision that is platted today. It includes industrial and commercial zoning on the north side, residential zoning to the west. We have some county zoning and planned unit development that's developed with duplexes to the south, and then public institution and industrial zoning to the east side or past Franklin Road. Really what is integral to this application of the zoning is looking at amending the boundary line of the property as it goes from east to west to make it more north-south. This highlights where the existing single-family is today, or the RS7 zoning, and where the RMD, RM12D zoning is located within the subdivision. This project was developed based on a very strong grid system, and the zoning reflects those boundaries, so that the zoning boundary falls at a back-to-back relationship. Just highlighting where those things are in relationship to that area. The proposed request would retain property that was zoned previously in 2011 for a single-lot church, which you saw preliminary plat of, and the RM12 for future townhouse development. Then this line here then would become the boundary between the duplex and the detached housing for this area. This slide highlights, again, the zoning boundary as it relates to that preliminary plat, which is a separate item for you to act on this evening. And then also, we have how this area relates to the adopted southeast area plan. This area calls for low and medium-density residential development that is often reflected of both detached and duplex-type housing, so the zoning is consistent with that, and we retain back-to-back relationships, as well as providing transition both from the more intensive uses to the east and to the west, and then from the north down to the south. Planning Commission heard that zoning. They provided a unanimous recommendation to forward to you, and they're requesting that, or recommending that you vote unanimously on the item. I don't know if you want me to go on with the preliminary plat presentation, or I can stop here.
Why don't we go ahead?
Okay. The preliminary plat, as I mentioned, is replating property that is already platted today. You've had, have looked at this property a couple of times already, relatively recently. This is the preliminary plat that platted that one single lot for the future church and reoriented lots along, I think that's Wellington, Rowston Street. And then we also moved the street intersection a little bit further to the south property line, still retaining the grid pattern, and then also the zoning that we saw for the townhouse development, but that did not affect the plat. You approved the preliminary plat this past summer, and the zoning a little bit later. What this preliminary plat does is revise portions of the interior, but it is only affecting the area south of 25th Street. It's retaining that townhouse area and the church lot. This is a platted subdivision today. It could be built today, and that is important because there's a variance associated with this subdivision. And what we wanted to highlight for you with these two slides, I'm going to show you again, that much of this area is staying the same within the scope of the area that's being replatted. Depending on how you want to highlight certain lots, actually more of this area is kind of staying in place because we are moving a little bit away from the very rigid grid pattern to a modified grid pattern within this area. And this shows you the modified grid pattern compared to what we were seeing previously. The subdivision regulations today require that there be sidewalks on both sides of the street. However, this plat was originally approved prior to the 2006 amendments, and so only requires sidewalks on one side of the street. The applicant's request is to approve the preliminary plat with a variance because we are replating. That is a technical requirement. After review of the configuration that we were looking at, and the fact that we have a number of existing subdivisions that are platted today but are not developed, this is one of five, there seemed to be some reasonable justification to support the applicant's request. This highlights where those few remaining subdivisions are. The Exchange and Hutton Farms and Diamond Head, they are a little bit different in their zoning. It would result in a little bit different housing product than either detached or a duplex type of development. So with the plat, to summarize, we are requesting a variance approval that does come to the governing body to make the determination on, based on when this application was submitted, and then to approve the preliminary plat. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Send you the sidewalk configuration through the development. There is continuous sidewalk.
It would be continuous. It would just be on one side.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. And it's a four-foot sidewalk, or do we know? That's just the minimum?
I believe it's a five foot, but I'd have to double-check.
Does the developer have, project have anything to add here to the presentation?
I'll be quick. Willis, just show up there.
I'm a member of Fairfield Investors, the owner of this tract. This issue seems a little tame compared to some that I've been behind the podium on, but it's important nonetheless, and certainly I'm not being presumptuous. We are in front of you tonight, and this is in front of the city, for the very simple reason of trying to jumpstart some residential activity on the east side of town. Most of the activity in this sector in recent years has been on the west side, and so the rezoning is tied to taking the site plan from, as Sandy said, a grid pattern to something, frankly, more interesting, and if it's more interesting to builders, it'll be more interesting to homeowners, and that's the feedback we're getting from the market. The second issue related to the plat and related to the variance that I wanted to speak to, and the reason I put this up is, and it's a little hard to see, but the highlighted areas on the north side of East 23rd Street are obviously East Hills and the city's new business park, and then the highlighted area on the south is our development, and I put that up there just to show the proximity to the city's economic development efforts. It's critical, in our opinion, to have starter-priced housing to support those economic developments, and the reason for the variance is that we're trying to make these lots as cost-effective to the builders as we can, and if they're cost-effective to the builders, they'll be cost-effective to the ultimate homeowners. It's about $1,000 a lot is what the cost estimate is on the savings on the sidewalks on one side of the street, and that is significant when you're talking about entry-level pricing. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we do think this is a critical development to support the economic development efforts. Dave made mention of a little bit of good news on the building permit side. We have not yet seen that good news relative to builders stepping to the table where we are, so, as I said, that's why we're here, to make it as cost-effective as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Is there public comment on this?
I have one question for Mr. Newsom. Bill, if the cost, that's your cost per lot, is $1,000, what would you estimate the impact would be on the cost of a home in that neighborhood to have to have the sidewalk on the other side of the street?
Well, like all developments, ultimately, who pays it? It's the end user. So in terms of, Hugh, in terms of cost, that $1,000, in my opinion, will ultimately be passed through in the price of the house.
At cost, though, or there's probably, it's not just at the cost. I would guess the end user pays more than the $1,000.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's like a two-by-four. It's like anything else. That's a good point, that there's a margin in there. It may not be a margin to us, but there's probably a little margin to the builder, and then, you know, you can do the math at what $1,000 calculates out to on a 30-year mortgage.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I think I missed what the average price point is on a house in that neighborhood.
Well, we aren't the builder, so we aren't delivering those, but I would hope that on the single-family side, that the end product could be as low as in the 160s, and on the townhouse side could be as low as in the 130s.
Okay.
You know, that's what we would hope that we could get the builders to, because it doesn't do anyone any good to have housing that's too high-priced in this economic environment.
Right. Thanks.
Back to the commission. Any other questions or comments on this?
Well, just comments on the plat, I'm fine with. The variance, I spoke to Bill briefly about some of my concerns on that, and that's really related to the efforts that we're doing with the Retiree Attraction Task Force, and we've seen the Complete Streets stuff that's come forward here. I know that we're waiting on that final version for us to approve, and that's definitely something that I'm endorsing and feel strongly about. I appreciate, I know Commissioner Belt and Blazer voted against this for that very reason, for the Complete Streets effort, and they're wanting to support that. So I thought I should at least speak to that and make clear that, you know, the variance is a little tougher for me, but I'm going to vote in favor of that as well, and I think largely because we're looking at, you know, this was approved prior to code changes, and, you know, it's a little tough because at $1,000 cost per lot, you know, if you're in the 160s, thousand range, you know, I'm not positive that's going to put people out of a home or not, but I do think that these being, the arterial streets around it and all have the sidewalks on both sides, and these are the interior streets. I know the neighborhood I grew up in is pretty similar to this, and I don't think there's a big safety issue there. It is five-foot wide sidewalks accommodate traffic in both directions. Should it be able to accommodate whether it's walkers or, you know, strollers or whatnot, but for several reasons, the need for affordable housing, I think, and a lack of any kind of safety issue here, and the fact, more than anything, that this was approved before the code changes, I would go for it. But I would say, just to be clear, going forward, for me, this is something I really want to look forward to us implementing a Complete Streets policy and being consistent with this going forward.
And just to, you know, to continue along with what Commissioner Carter was talking about, the width of that sidewalk made a lot of the difference for me, and the fact that it was going to be a multi-use kind of pathway through the neighborhood, but also the fact that, as you may have mentioned a second ago, that we have approved this prior to the ordinance change, and that it seems to make sense at this point. Staff's recommendation was probably the final decision for me in being able to look at this in a positive way, because I know it's hard to have code written in such a way, but still, I think this was a positive move, especially in light of, again, as Hugh may have mentioned, you know, affordable housing in Lawrence is something that I really need to be looking at. So anyway, thanks for all your work on it. Thanks for all your work.
Yeah, I'm eager to try and move forward with building some affordable housing, especially in that part of the city where we may be able to attract some people who would commute or some people who would work in that area. The presence of sidewalks on both sides of the street is, I think, important, but there are many communities in our, many neighborhoods in our communities that do not have them, and I live on a street just like that, and I think they function pretty well. As long as they're placed properly and they're of the right width, I think we can accommodate pedestrian traffic in these, hopefully lightly-traveled sections of the platted neighborhood. I think the cost, although it does seem $1,000 might be the number, it could be more in the future, and so we're trying to stimulate some building activity here in the community, and I think anything that the commission can do to help with that, given the fact this is platted and ready to go with one side of the street accommodated, I think this minor alteration is not substantial enough to not continue with that design. So, given a positive staff recommendation and the general support of the Planning Commission, I'm in favor of moving forward with the replat and the variance for sidewalks on both sides of the street.
And I'll echo pretty much, I think, everything said here. Totally in favor of our Complete Street program. I think that's important moving forward, that we definitely are making allowances for alternate forms of transportation, not just cars, but here we have an example of a project that was already platted under our rules that only required, our original rules, only requiring one side of the street sidewalks, and some changes were made, and so that fell out of our, the old, and became part of the new rules, but still, I think that an exception in this case is, I think, a good idea. You know, $1,000 on a $160,000 house or whatever, doesn't seem like a lot, but $1,000, when you think about it on a lot, on a, I don't know what you're selling your lots for, $30 something thousand-dollar lot, becomes fairly significant expenditure, and you're right, the margins are going to attach to that, and Realtor commissions and other fees and such are going to rack up on that, and it'll be a little bit higher, and I'm still not opposed to, you know, other developments moving forward, having that expenditure on there. I think it's a good idea, and this particular one, it's not quite grandfathered in with the old rules, but it almost is, and it's close enough for me, and with the recommendation and a lack of, of complete, you know, lack of opposition to this, too, is ways in, and I think that I'm in favor here of moving forward with the rezoning and plating of this property at this time. So I would entertain the motion, splitting these out.
Be ready for the...
Rezone first.
I would make a motion that we adopt on first reading ordinance number 8711, which is the request to rezone the 14.52 acres located south and east of 25th Terrace and O'Connell Road from RM12D and RS7 to RM12D and RS7.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Amick, seconded by Commissioner Carter. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. And the plat?
I would also make a motion to approve the variance request and preliminary plat for Fairfield Farms East Edition 1. Again, the same location as said earlier.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Amick, seconded by Commissioner Carter. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. Thank you. Is there public comment of a general nature this evening?
Hello.
Wesley?
This will be longer than 50 seconds, 15 seconds, so I'm sorry. It might be 45. Do you have the timer?
Okay. Okay, go.
I hope you all got my email invitation I sent yesterday.
Yes, thank you.
This week, the Chairman of the National Endowment of the Arts is visiting Lawrence and Topeka. The panel discussion Thursday is about creative placemaking, which is a public-private collaboration to identify culturally significant places and enact as an incubator to promote their growth. The end result for the city is a significant boost to the tax base and boost in the quality of life of the city. For instance, North Topeka, which is the commercial area across the river from downtown Topeka, do you guys know about North Topeka?
Yes.
It has recently been designated an arts district, which was already in its, which already in its early stages proven to help turn around the slow decay of that commercial district and breathe new life into revitalizing its safety and vibrancy, with people fixing up the old buildings into galleries and studios. Of course, the city sees a boost to its tax base with this work. Tony Krasnick, of course, is doing something different, similar with the Polar Building and the area around it. Perhaps Lawrence can investigate its own creative placemaking in ways that can bolster neighborhoods and act as economic development at the same time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening? We'll move on then to future agenda. Dave?
No meeting next week? On the 27th, I think what we'll do is, in discussion with you, Mayor, we might move that to the second meeting in April. We're not going to have the feasibility study from Springstead. We've already talked to them. We've also talked to the applicant, also the applicant's attorney. We also know that the first meeting in April is the changing of the guard, the mayor's...
Demoted. The mayor's...
Mayor's State of the City speech, and then the selection of the new mayor and vice-mayor. We traditionally don't have major items on, on that Tuesday, so we think that, that would, that would ensure that that feasibility study, all of that information will be available. We won't have the issue of not having that ready in time. We only got the information, I think, was it last week, from the applicant that we could get to Springstead, and you approved that, that agreement this evening, so I think that, that, that works. So in recognition, the 27th is now open. I think we would then suggest that that would be available for the memorandum on the tennis court lights. I think that that's appropriate.
Great.
To get that before you all. We do have the Complete Streets policy ready. We want to check with the proponents. I know that they want to come and speak. We want to make sure that the 27th works for them. There's a number of people that are interested in the tennis court issues.
Likewise with that, that issue, too. We'll, we'll check with the interested parties.
Check with, with those.
As long as that works with them, then it'll, it'll work great.
Okay. Great. So that's, that's my suggestions.
Great.
On some agenda management. There's probably a few other things that we'll be putting on the 27th as well.
Sure. As we, yeah, with a, with a week off that happens. Very good. Is there commission items? Commissioner? Okay. Calendar?
Don't believe so.
Sounds good.
The only, I did have a question on the calendar, a ribbon cutting that I have. It has on April 6th on the written comments, but it's listed on April 5th. You can just pick a day.
Let's find out.
Yeah, it'd be fun.
Diane's writing that down, and we'll communicate with you tomorrow on that, Mike.
That's fine.
And also here, can you make sure that I get the information on the Thursday ribbon cutting?
Yes, for John Carter.
Yes. Before I, yeah. Is there anything else on the calendar? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there anything else on the calendar? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.